Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to get started. We are here for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. Today is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. The time is now 5 past 1:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the city website and City Hall bulletin board. Notice hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible of audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer is absent. Mayor Mulloch?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
CFO Haney?
Here.
Any additions or deletions tonight, council?
Do we have any, council? No? Okay. On to Employee of the Month. City Manager, want to take it away?
Thank you. How you doing? First, Rich, come on up here so that you get to... So our Employee of the Month, Employee of the Month this month is Rich Heim. He's one of our supervisors in the Public Works Department, and he's been with us since 2017, started as a laborer and has kind of worked up his ranks and just shown his dedication, and that's why he's gotten to a supervisor level now. And he kind of, he's in the buildings and grounds, and you will see him zigzagging throughout the city. He always has his notebook in hand to take notes of what needs to be done, what, you know, and that's kind of, you know, his thing, and his jingles with his keys. So he is really just a great employee and just always wanting to make the city a little bit better, and that's really what I think. And that's really what his coworkers, you know, between the jingles and the notebook, that's what his little nickname is with his fellow employees. And when he's off duty, he just loves to spend time with his wife, Kelly. That's what he does in his spare time is, does that. So I just, you know, he's just a great employee here, so I just want to say congratulations to Rich. Congrats. Paul did ask me if we should give you a key to the city. I said, "You already have all of them," so. But while we have a lot of our Department of Public Works here, I just want to thank all of you. The city really looks beautiful, and it's been packed. You know, we have a lot of people, so it takes a tremendous effort, and I just saw a lot of you all working out in front of the convention hall this morning, and it really looks beautiful, ready for our big event today. I don't want to give away the clerk's announcement later, but really appreciate all of your hard work, so thank you very much. Thank you. Eric, thank you very much. Great job. Great job.
Okay, on to updates and old business. City Manager, do you have any updates or old business?
The main, I'll just wait two seconds while I... Obviously, we're in the heart of the summer season, but we are looking forward to starting up projects come this fall, and, you know, we do have, I will be meeting this week with both the contractor for the promenade restoration work, so we'll be looking at that work. We'll start up right after Labor Day, as well as our New Jersey Infrastructure Bank project, the sewer and water replacement project that'll start probably on Illinois Avenue and work outwards. That contractor's already, and with our city inspector, De Blasio Associates, they've been out in the neighborhoods of that affected project handing out flyers to residents as well as mailing them to just make sure that they're aware of this upcoming project that'll be starting in September, too. So I just wanted to, you know, especially that the public know that, you know, that's a legit city inspector coming out for a project that's going to be working in your neighborhood, so it's important that if they have questions, to reach out to them or myself, because they will be doing work in front of your house come starting September.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
I'm not sure, as they're handing out flyers, whether or not, because we have that moratorium on the street openings, if you want to be provided gas, is that included in that?
That is also mentioned in the letter that there is a moratorium for that. And also, before we do these projects, we notify the utility companies of our pending work so that they, if they have some planned work, that they get in here before we do our work also.
Thank you.
Yep. And then next, I just would like to follow up. I know the Jacob Jones Committee had their little public session last week fairly well attended, and they just wanted to pass along to me and pass along to the City Council, you know, that based on the public comment both that we had here at our council meeting and theirs, you know, that there will be relooking at what location, the size and the scope of what they're looking at as that Jacob Jones Memorial project moves forward. So, you know, they've kind of heard what the public has said as far as that location and that size of a monument is just out of scope and scale for that location. So they're going to be going back to the drawing board and looking for another avenue to commemorate the Jacob Jones Memorial. So I just wanted to pass that along and look forward to seeing everybody out there at National Night Out tonight. Thanks.
Okay, great. City Solicitor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Council, any updates or old business? No? Okay. On to ordinances for introduction.
Yes, we have 574-2025, an ordinance amending zoning code to confirm the intent and purpose of pool setback requirements for introduction.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
I...
You're, okay.
Solicitor?
You're going to continue our conversation.
If I may, one thing that, so this is to clarify, it's not really changing any of the bulk requirements.
Mr. Gillen Schwartz?
Sorry about that. It's not, this ordinance is not really changing any of the operative bulk requirements. The setbacks and coverages are all the same. What this is, is updating the intent of those bulk setback requirements so that if a variance application ends up coming before the board, it's not just fire safety access, it's still light, air and open space, and there's other planning considerations for why we have setbacks for pools. In reviewing this, Councilwoman Baldwin brought up a good point, which is that our fire safety review does occur routinely when pool applications are presented to the planning or zoning board. So that'll get routed to the fire department. They'll get a letter from the fire department saying, "Hey, we don't have any life safety concerns," or maybe they do have concerns, they'll provide comment. Council may see some value in having that review occur even if there's not a variance application, because this is a unique town where we may have a building that's closer on an adjoining property than, you know, the setbacks require because of existing nonconforming conditions. So there may be a good reason just to have fire review in every case, and I actually spoke to the fire chief before this meeting. He indicated, you know, he's prepared to do that, it's not a heavy lift, and it's going to give the fire department probably a good look at each of these properties when something is changing there. So I could propose an amendment to this so that we can include that as part of this amendment, and it would read something like this. We'd keep, the new language would be the same, we'd just add a number six at the bottom, and it would say, "All applications for the installation or construction of accessory swimming pools, whether or not any variance relief is required, shall be subject to review by the fire department chief or his designee prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The purpose of this review is to ensure that the proposed pool location, access and surrounding conditions do not interfere with fire department operations, access routes or fire safety requirements." So if council would like to entertain that, you could make a motion to amend the ordinance on first reading to include that, and then we could adopt on first reading, and then this amended ordinance would then get sent to the planning board for review.
So I would make that motion. I concur with Councilwoman Baldwin's recommendation, so I would make the recommendation to make, to include that language.
Everyone understand what the Solicitor said?
I agree with that also. I think it's a good, sound policy, sound idea.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So that's a motion to amend the ordinance 574. We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulloch?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
I'll make the... I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the amended ordinance?
I just have one question. Mr. Gillen Schwartz, this, the R4 does not permit swimming pools at all.
Right, and this does not override that.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's clarification from the public's perspective.
In locations where pools are permitted, these regulations will govern.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulloch?
Yes.
We have 575-2025.
We don't have public comment on the original ordinance. You can, we have multiple public comments, so you'll be happy. Yes. I'm sorry? Yes, and then we would have a second reading where there is public comment specifically on that ordinance, yeah.
575-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 310 of the Code of City of Cape May concerning licensing and permits to update fees and costs associated with special events and use of public property.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulloch?
Yes.
And moving on to ordinance for a second reading and consideration for adoption, we have 573-2025, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement between the Mid-Atlantic Center for the Arts, Inc., or MAC, for a portion of the Welcome Center, and there is a public hearing tonight.
These are the ordinances for second reading this evening, and we do have a public hearing on ordinance 573. Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 573? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulloch?
Yes. Mac, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Just want to thank the City Council Administration. Public Works thus far has been phenomenal working with our staff, and we appreciate your confidence. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jody, and thank you to all of Mac and all of the staff and volunteers. We've heard really great feedback, and I did ask for the electric bill this month, and it was not too bad, so thank you. Okay, with that, we can move on to public portion on resolutions this evening. Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions this afternoon? Hi, Stacy.
Let me start, I'm just going to wait till them all.
Sure.
My first question has to do with Resolution 250...
I'm sorry, Stacy.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. Has to do with Resolution 251. Can get some clarification on what this actually is, because it doesn't seem like it's an RFP, so I wasn't sure. You're advertising that you're going to go out for a contract?
So this is a unique process, actually provided under law. So normally, we'd be proceeding through procurement through the local public contracts law. The local public contracts law actually has an exception for water supply contracts, and it's, has its own specific process, which this is the beginning of, and the resolution sought to outline how it was going to go. But yes, it's, you send out a request for qualifications for potential qualified contractors, and the statute specifically authorizes the city to then engage with negotiations on one of those qualified contractors, contractors to see if you can come up with a contract that would meet the city's needs. And then ultimately, there's three agencies involved. We send out a notice of intent to do that process, to the NJDEP, to the DCA, and to the BPO. So there's three agencies involved, and then they're in the beginning, and then also at the end, they get a chance to review after the city conducts a public hearing on the contract. So we, that's not tonight. We're trying to solicit contractors to provide a proposal for tank maintenance services, and then ultimately, that will be subject to a public hearing. The contract would be in front of all of council, the public... The contract would be in front of all of Council, the public, ask any questions about cost, services, whole nine yards.
Now, is this, are they looking to do a 40-year contract with this, or just it's up to a 40-year contract?
It's up to.
I mean, we're looking for a 20-year.
20 years for tank maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, because I guess my concern when I saw this, that since we haven't really moved forward on the DSAW, that this was going to be going to maybe New Jersey Water for our water system, and that's why I was questioning that.
No.
Okay. My next thing has to do with Resolution 243, which is the resolution of the City of Cape May approving the corrective actions for the audit that was done for 2024. My first question is, are any of these audit findings a repeat from last year?
Yes, the item where it mentions the implementation of a general ledger, that has been a repeat audit item for a couple of years now.
Okay, so we've had a couple of years of audit findings where the general ledger has not been accurately maintained, many entries were incomplete and incorrect, is that correct? So after a couple of years of this, what is the city going to do for a corrective action since informing the CFO that this should be done and it's not being done? What corrective actions are we doing?
So I met with the city manager and the CFO over the course of two meetings. We have put together a comprehensive corrective action along with the findings, the corrective action plan, responsible party, and a date of when this needs to be rectified. I will be meeting with them the first week of every month through the end of the year, and having the discussions to get status and updates.
Right, because this is like the third, second or third year this has been done. So I'm thinking, letting them know that this should be done is not really a great corrective action.
So, I would say, I couldn't necessarily disagree, which was why I sat down with the CFO and the city manager, and we've put together a comprehensive plan. It has been shared with Mr. Costello, and he appreciates the effort is underway. So I think we're, we're moving forward in a very good place. I'm very confident in what the, what has been put together, Stacy, as well as what the process will be going forward.
Okay, because there's a lot of things found in this audit, another being that bank accounts were not reconciled timely, some accounts were not reconciled in 2024, leaving expenses and receipts unrecorded.
Your comments are well taken.
Great, okay.
It is one of the reasons why I met and sat down, and we went through this process. So we intend to not have these repeat, and so that, that is the, the goal and the purpose, and I can give you my assurance that, you know, we will be on top of this.
Well, that's what I was hoping was going to happen last year, and it didn't. There's also.
Well, wait a second, that, there, every audit has recommendations. There's never an audit that says, gold star, everything's perfect. That happens every year.
Oh, every year we have it, our ledgers are not correctly.
Yeah.
Maintained, and we don't think that's a problem?
That's not what I just said, and you know that.
Well, okay, we have two years that, that the ledgers were not time, accurately and timely maintained. They were missing entries and wrong entries. We also had down payments were approved without sufficient funds in the capital improvement fund. The general capital improvement fund was overspent, and down payments for capital products were approved without adequate funding. The deferred charges mitigates immediate harm but increases budget, future budget obligations.
Ms. Shan, I think we could all read from what the budget, the audit finding.
Well, I think a lot of people didn't see these attachments, so that's why I'm making sure that people understand what's happening with our budget and our, and our audit.
I can only give you the assurance that going forward, these issues will have been identified, a corrective action plan, there's an executive summary that was shared with Council and the mayor, we've put a responsible party next to it, and a date and time when these will be completed, and I will be personally involved in the process.
Okay. My next question has to do with Resolution 245, a risk management consultant. I just want some clarification on what the risk management consultant is going to do for the services for Cape May.
Well, I, I can speak a little bit to it. Risk management generally takes a look at everything from, if you have contracts, or you have a process, or your operations, your HR policies. So, you know, this, it's a pretty broad spectrum of services that a risk management company could offer. We currently have a, a firm that we do business with. It's always good to evaluate whether or not there are different opportunities or different scope of services that could be offered, and this is really what this is. It's not saying that we're making any changes, it's really to say, let's go out, see what's out there. You know, it's, Minister Pal, go ahead.
So we already have a risk consultant?
Yes.
We're just going to go for proposal for another one?
Yeah.
Is that it, what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's just to basically make sure we're getting the best services at the best cost.
Correct, yeah, right.
From what we already have.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Anyone else on resolutions today? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on resolutions.
Council, is there anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Anything you'd like to remove, Council? No?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDate?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
I guess moving on to new business?
New business? City Solicitor, any new business?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Manager?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City Clerk?
Just a reminder, obviously everyone knows tonight is National Night Out. The Police Department is very busy on Beach Ave in front of Convention Hall, it starts at 5:30, so we really encourage everybody to attend and participate. And that's it, Council.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Baldwin?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, are you going to be in the dunk tank?
Well, yeah. Ask them to put some.
I don't know if he has much to say.
I forgot to bring a change of clothes tonight, so I can't really do the dunk tank. I don't have a change of clothes.
We can make it happen.
No, just on a serious note, though, I attended a concert this weekend up at Convention Hall, and the concerts this year have been fabulous. Convention Hall staff have been, doing a really great job up there. But Mac McAnally's been here, the Bacon Brothers have been here, Marshall Tucker Band will be here next, on Saturday, and then Dom McLean on the 23rd. Just a really good, you know, nice lineup this year.
Yeah.
Very well attended. So, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Great work on that. Councilman Bodnar?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I just want to mention the community center, I checked in with Dave, who is the, you know, sort of the lead person from the Rec Department. He said they're seeing some nice activity coming in for people playing cards during the week, which is great. They have Wii Play starting in September. The exercise program has, you know, it has ballooned, you know, they're, if they're up on the promenade, they've got 30, 40 people, and I think they had over 30 this past Friday when they couldn't do it. So it really has taken off, so I personally very much appreciate all of the, the work that has gone into it and the support of this council and, and getting that up and running, and I, I look forward to the fall, I really think it's going to be, have even more activities and, and more utilization, so, thank you.
That's great. Just, just a quick one, I think, working with Councilman Bodnar and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, I want to thank Mr. Cassidy for joining on this, this, in this meeting. I think they'll, I think he'll, I see him out on his bicycle every day, so I think he'll be a valuable asset to that committee. Also, we did just get in a bunch of stickers from, from the, on behalf of the Bicycle Committee and, and Mr. Bodnar, with a, what do they call those codes? QR, thank you. QR codes, that we're going to work with all of the bike rental agencies to put right on the frame of the bicycle, so it'll just be a QR code that goes right to the bicycle safety homepage of the city website, so. It already has a lot of valuable information on that, it has, you know, safe routes that, you know, are alternatives to other locations, but as we advance the mapping services and things like that, working with Google and Apple to make specific bike routes, we think that'll be really a nice upgrade to the website as, as we move that forward. So stay safe out there, you know, especially as we're coming to the end of the season. Again, I want to thank our lifeguards, we've had no major events, but I did see a few issues come up recently, and, and all of them on the Jersey Shore were after hours or before hours of the lifeguards swimming on an unprotected beach. So I just say that as a reminder to everybody, as we get closer to the end of the season, swim near a lifeguard. Thank you, and we'll move on to the public portion to this, this afternoon. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Hello.
Hi, everybody, I'm going to just do this a little.
Please.
And these, these do move, so you're welcome to move up and down, just make sure you speak into it, okay?
There you go. Okay. Hi, my name is Sally Snyder, and I live at 1 Wilmington Avenue, and I am here to present to you a petition that has over 435 signatures that states, "We, the undersigned, respectfully oppose the construction and the placement of the Jacob Jones Memorial Monument on the Dunes of Poverty Beach." Now, on the back, that's what it says on the front of all these, and then on the back, it tells the opposition and our requests. And as I will say, that of these 435, I've probably personally seen 400 of these signed, and they are from people as they are going on and off of Poverty Beach, to give you an idea, over the last 10 days. Now, it's not only the residents that have signed it, but it's also all the vacationers who come and prefer Poverty Beach and understand the beauty of it, and, let's see what I want to say. Okay. The people that I've talked to in the last 10 days, some of them are there for the first time. I met a family this morning of five people. Their family has been coming to Poverty Beach over 100 years. Many have watched Poverty Beach be transformed, as I have, from broken shells to a beautiful, tranquil, natural beach with dunes and wildlife, due to all of you in your years of effort, due to the core of engineering and all of the restorations, due to the many, 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 probably miles of snow fences that has gone in, Hurricane Sandy, which deposited a tremendous amount of sand there, birds, and the wind. I'm also here to present you with letters, and the letter, I only want to point out one sentence on the letter, "I urge the Council to reject any proposal that involves placing a permanent structure in the dunes of Poverty Beach, no matter well, how well-intended or funded." I am here to present you with the petitions and with the letters to represent the residents as well as all of those vacationers. I would like to submit these letters and petitions for legal record. Poverty Beach, it's our last sentence on here. Poverty Beach belongs to the people and to nature, let's preserve it for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And where, Kirk?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gail Wilsie-Morrison. I'm the owner of a commercial property at 501 Lafayette Street. I'm here this afternoon to address the proposed location for the Jacob Jones Monument. On July 30th, I participated in the Zoom meeting during which John Becker represented that the Jacob Jones Memorial Foundation stated they are no longer pursuing the original design and location that was presented to Council on July 15th and identified as Site Number Three. While a new design has yet to be finalized, the foundation did indicate that Poverty Beach remains the intended location, though now outside of the dunes, and that no clear timeline has been established for moving forward. Thank you to the city manager for notifying City Council today that Site Number Three has been withdrawn. On behalf of myself and other concerned community members, I want to express strong opposition to any placement of the monument at Poverty Beach. As the owner of the commercial property at 501 Lafayette Street, which was honored with the Historic Preservation Commission's Renovation Award in 2005, I've always had deep respect for Cape May's history, preservation, and thoughtful design. Growing up year-round at 1015 Stockton Avenue, I have a strong visual memory of the power of Mother Nature and the Atlantic Ocean. The photos in this book I brought with me reflect the many storms that my mom put together from 1962 to 1994, that my family personally witnessed from our front porch, evidence of the vulnerability of the shoreline. On a side note, my father was an aerial photographer stationed in Germany during World War II, so he was always taking photos. Placing a permanent memorial on or near the beach or in coordinating, coordination with a pending seawall project raises serious concerns from an environmental standpoint. This area has a long history of devastation from hurricanes, nor'easters, and flooding. A monument meant to honor should be placed in a protected, enduring setting, not one exposed to such known threats. Additionally, Poverty Beach is an active recreational area, not a quiet, reverent space. It brings safety concerns, including limited lifeguard coverage, inadequate parking, and street that lacks sidewalks. For these reasons, I respectfully urge City Council to withdraw the Poverty Beach area from consideration. Thank you for your time and your service to the city, and if anybody wants to see these photos later, I'd be happy to show them to you.
Thank you, Gail. Just before everybody speaks, and we're not going to cut anybody off, but I just want to be really clear about a couple of things. One, this is not a City Council proposal, okay? This, this was, did not come from City Council. This is coming from a group of citizens, just like many of yourselves, who is proposing this to the city. I just want to be very clear about that. And also, our understanding as a City Council is hopefully what everyone understands here is that, that they have gone back to the drawing board, is, so I just want everyone to know, I know nothing more, and I know no one up here knows anything more than you probably do, so I just, I want to be really clear about that. And also, just to be clear, that the reason we've been asking for these to happen at City Council is so that everybody hears it just like, just as we are and, and you are. So I, I just want to make sure that's very clear to everybody. We don't know where this stands just as much as you don't, and the next time that their ideas come, we're asking again to do it in public, do it on live stream, and, so I just want to be clear about that. But having said that, please, go ahead, I apologize for interrupting.
I think your introduction was perfect to what I'm going to say.
Okay.
Jeffrey Morris, 1621 Beach Ave, and I actually spoke to one of the committee members yesterday, and a lot of the questions that we have and concerns, they heard, but the feedback I got was, that'll be up to the mayor. So whether you, whether you'd like to say, I'm a, I'm a passive, and I'm a passive guy in this until things come up, they're deferring to you on a number of things, and let me just go into some of the suggestions and things I did tell to them, you know, I mean, the mayor always gets put on the hot spot, so I'm not.
I hear you.
It's not a criticism, I'm just telling you what the committee said to me, or at least one of the members. And they were willing to bring some of my ideas to that, but since they deferred to you, I want to give you some of what I told them.
Sure.
Because, and I'm sure they'll be discussing it, so thank you for that. So the Jacob Jones Memorial Project and the two presentations that I've attended start with the purpose of the project, and then, and then they go to the select criteria, the selection criteria, and they clearly stated as their must-haves, that, that the beach and the ocean must be visible, that it must be in the city of Cape May, and it must be capable of harmonizing art and nature. It does seem, and the reason I think they went back to the drawing board, is what they really presented was shock and awe, disruptive nature, and the change of the beach experience for those going there. As you know, people do come to Cape May to enjoy many things, and one of the Cove's objections posted on the website was, quote, "The Cove, the Cove should remain a living, unobstructed, open space with no additional clutter or structure, allowing for visitors to create their own memories that serve as their personal memorials." Since, since one of the members kind of directed me to hear, I would ask that the Town Council consider their own selection criteria and what your must-haves are on behalf of the community. community, the residents, the homeowners, the visitors, the businesses, since you are the guardians of our historic buildings and the guardians of our beautiful beaches. For example, how about, "The memorial cannot disturb or diminish a natural area." How about, "It must not disrupt the beach experience that includes the view, the mood, and the natural environment." If it is near a beach, it must be proportionate size and design as to not force, quote, "an immersive war experience," that's John Boker's words, "on unsuspecting beachgoers." And for example, no higher than waist-high or bench-high. If it's going to be near the beach, it should be put on the promenade or an already paved area, or street-side of the promenade, and with embedded plaques in the surface of the walking promenade to provide additional educational experience but lower the impact on a resort area. It should ideally be placed near other monuments to enhance the context, whether that is the Lost Sailors Memorial, the World War II Canal, or the World War II Tower. And as many of you know, there is a World War II Tower in the city of Cape May. It sticks through the roof of the Grand Hotel. And certainly, putting it close to that would add links and contexts. At the public Zoom, there were questions that was in a chat box, so it really was hard to have a discussion with them. But when asked, you know, why they were creating the monument they were, John Boker said, "We want visitors to experience the horror of war and the terror these sailors felt." Really? Is that what we want on our Cape May beaches? I understand it's an artist's interpretation. He's a, he's a great architect. He's putting his heart and soul into this. But that's the kind of thing that should be in a war museum, and not when people are coming to the beach. These sailors fought to protect us from the horror of war coming to our. They can be honored for that with a solemn monument, as most war monuments do, and not bring the war to the beach, which is what they were trying to prevent. And let's talk about some other resort examples. Normandy, the most famous beach of World War II, if you've been there. They have a few kiosks. They have museums in the back, but the scenery is serene. The natural beach that the people can enjoy, the unspoiled beach is the tribute to those who lost in battle. Hilton Head has a Battle of Port Royal Memorial. It is a stone monument with a tilted surface about chest-high that explains the battle of a model, that explains the battle and has a model of an intact ship. It directs you from there to walk away from the monument to out, and look out to the sea. It's really maybe a couple hundred yards, so it's not where the beach is. But it directs you at the monument to walk, you know, 100, 150 yards, go out to the sea, and look and see where the battle was.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I did that. I was surprised. You know, I came upon it. I lingered. I read. I looked. I honored. I reflected. It wasn't a 32-foot or a 26-foot reflective metal attention-getter, and who knows what will be next. The Outer Banks, they had 70 ships that were sunk off the coast of World War, World War II in the Battle of the Atlantic, off the beach, and they give you a map of the shore with dots to show where the ships sank, serene natural beaches. You can walk with the map and look at what was there and think about the ships that sank. My father was a World War II veteran in the Army Corps of Engineers. They were the first over the Rhine in Germany in advance of the infantry. He and his company cleared mines, built and destroyed roads and bridges, often behind enemy lines. And when the infantry came, the Army Corps fought side by side with them, and afterwards, the company would stay behind, my father included, to put dead soldiers in body bags. Should his monument be an artistic pile of bodies honoring the dead? They fought to protect us from the horror of war, not experience it at a beach. Poverty Beach, I know the mayor talked about a lot of projects that sometimes people are not happy with, but, but in the end, it brings joy or public safety, and those are certainly important things. Poverty Beach, excuse me, a seawall is coming. Some people don't like that, but we know that's public safety. A promenade is coming. Some people don't like that, but we know, in the mayor's words, it'll bring more joy to some people when they, you know, to the masses when they come and have a more, a longer place to walk on the beach and feel the wind and all that kind of stuff. We heard from a community member, a licensed architect, that putting a structure in an storm surge area can challenge public safety. I'm almost done. I'm asking council, you know, to not take away the joy of the beach, to not challenge public safety, because almost all your other projects that even you mentioned, whether it was, whether it was the playground or the natural area, I mean, those are things that brought joy or brought public safety. So I'm hoping that you will have your must haves and your experiences that you want to go into this monument, because, you know, I've been told, well, the mayor's going to decide that. So, think about it. That's all I'm asking. And think about what I've said. I've told this to the committee, hoping some of it will be brought to them, and I hope some of it resonates with you because we are a resort area. You know, we do have residents, but a lot of people come to visit, as it's already been said. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Yes.
I'm Lee Snyder. I'm a resident of 1 Wilmington Avenue, Cape May. I'm a registered architectural engineer in New Jersey, plus five other states. I, last July 15th, I talked about the environment. Today, I like to talk about the safety concerns. The start of the handicap ramp is only 100 feet from the southeast corner of the intersection of Beach and Wilmington Avenue. The first 100 feet is actually striped, so no parking can occur. And this is because navigating the curve, a lot of times, as I sit there looking at that corner, vehicles just encroach on that area. To have a wall where the handicap ramp is, just is a concern. Vehicles that travel down Beach Avenue at a high speed, higher speed than what's posted, many vehicles, like I said, don't navigate that curve as everybody would like. The bottom of the ramp is 6'6" elevation, which is 6 inches above the street level. The only thing that protects the west edge of the ramp from the roadway is a 6-inch-high curb. I'm concerned about when somebody's traveling north on Wilmington Avenue, if, when they make that turn, if they jump the curb, or somebody in a wheelchair is coming down and they lose control, they'll, they'll be in the road, which is a concern. The existing overall width of Wilmington Avenue is 45'10". The proposed handicap ramp extends 10 foot into this area. Thus, it reduces the overall roadway width to 35'10". It should also be noted that this road does not have separate designated bike lanes. And a side note, the ramp's going to eliminate at least three parking spaces, which is already a challenge. The remaining distance from the west edge of the ramp to the center line of Wilmington Avenue is only 14'3 1/2". I'm sorry to be so exact, but that's my engineering background.
Mr. Snyder, can I, can I just comment on that? We're talking about something that isn't happening. So I'm just...
Okay.
It's an idea that was presented, and I understand your concern, believe me, and to that detail would be what we would be getting into if we were going to approve it. But we haven't, and frankly, we've heard the concern. So I'm not trying to cut you off.
No, no, I accept, and I'll just move forward here, as I have...
I'm sorry. I was going to say this prior, yes. I'm Stephanie Snyder of 1 Wilmington Avenue. I wanted to say prior to my talk that you might have heard, and we heard on the Zoom call, that this proposal is being reworked. However, on your city website, the current proposal that we saw in the last meeting is still the one listed. And until a new location, a new site, and a new memorial that might be a little smaller, that might be a few feet further off the beach, this is still a concern. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my daughter. Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to just, my real concern, whether it's located where it was shown July 15th, is it's, it's constructed of aluminum. It was 41 foot tall plus a flagpole. It's going to, it's going to increase the likelihood of some, of that structure being struck by lightning, because aluminum is a good conductor of electricity. In fact, it's the predominant material used in the electrical industry when dealing with high amperage and voltages. Therefore, if struck by lightning, the monument will readily conduct a current generated by the lightning, potentially causing significant damage to the structure itself, visitors, and nearby areas. The existing walkway to the beach, well, I'll skip that too. So the coastal environments experience higher incidence of thunderstorms, greatly increasing the chances for a lightning strike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Chuxis. My sisters and I own the properties at 1716, 1717, 1724, and 1725 New York Avenue. I'm also here about the Jacob Jones Memorial, and repeating again, that on the Zoom call, we were told by John Becker, he gave us the eight names of the people that are on the foundation, and he said that Mayor Zach Mullock and Lorraine, Councilwoman Lorraine, were actually on the foundation. So I think that is the reason why we would like to present our objections to a memorial being placed at Poverty Beach. Again, we understand, as been said, that they've told us that the Site Number Three location and design has been nixed. They're moving on. They're, they're doing a new transformation of that, but they are still planning, they said, to put it at Poverty Beach. They're talking about moving it up and integrating it into the existing seawall. And they're not going to tell us what the size is. They said it's going to be more personal size. They don't know the materials. They said they will get back to us and then do another presentation. So we are just kind of coming out on a preemptive, you know, like, looking at that and saying, okay, are there any issues that might come up, having any memorial at this particular place? You've heard a couple of other people talk about that. I have a couple of reasons that, things that I would like you guys to consider if I don't happen to be around when they give their presentation and happens to be on Poverty Beach. This weekend, I was on Poverty Beach with my family, and I had a chance to talk to a longtime local lifeguard to find out his perspective of having a memorial of any size in the area of Poverty Beach, and if it would have any impact on his job. He said the Poverty Beach is already too crowded, and that anything that would bring more people to the area or the beach would make it more difficult for him to keep people safe. He pointed out an area up at the beach. I couldn't really see where he was pointing. I was standing at the lifeguard stand. The beach was packed. And he says he puts out cones every morning to clear a path for the lifeguard rescue truck to get through to his stand. He said that there now is so little beach at the corner of Wilmington and Beach, especially at high tide, that people disregard the cones and sit or play in the pathway. He told me that if he had a body that needs to be transported to a medical facility and a rescue truck could not get through to his stand, people will die. I went out, and the first picture that I gave you is a picture of the beach, which is the, that's supposed to be the pathway of where the rescue truck would go. And there is hardly any room, and people are playing bocce ball and everything like that. So I, I see his point, and that prompted me to do a little bit more research. And I know you guys are all familiar with the report from the Army Corps of Engineers. I just wanted to read a section that pertains to this particular issue. And it says that the report itself, the primary problem driving this study is overtopping of the seawall in the vicinity of Beach Avenue and Wilmington, Wilmington Avenue and Cape May City. This studied section of Cape May seawall is the weak link in the city's CSRM system, with stormwater first cresting at this location for both high-frequency and low-frequency events. And then they go on to say, "In an effort to determine why the area in the vicinity of Beach and Wilmington Avenues was the weak spot for flooding along the oceanfront, the PDT examined recent survey profiles of the federal beach project in conjunction with the seawall elevation survey data that was collected for this study. The PDT also discussed the built Beach and Wilmington Avenue area with the USACE project manager for the federal beach project. The project manager indicated that the area is considered an erosion hot zone, where it is difficult to maintain sand, which is placed during periodic beach replenishment cycles. Even when an additional lobe of sand has been added as a buffer at the Beach and Wilmington Avenue's area, the tidal and wave forces of the ocean quickly bring the area into a linear equilibrium with the beaches to the east and the west. The PTT has concluded that the underlying condition which makes the area so vulnerable is the distance between the seawall to the ocean. The last two blocks of Beach Avenue angle out toward the ocean, which decreases the distance between the seawall and the ocean by approximately 300 feet compared to the rest of the oceanfront in Cape May during a storm surge event when the ocean's surface is elevated."
Mr. Mayor.
"The corner is first and most susceptible point for wave attack. Frequent accroachment by the ocean is also the reason that a dune has not accreted and become vegetated in front of the seawall as it has along the rest of the oceanfront." So, bringing, creating a monument of any size or any amount to bring more people to an area that is one of the most delicate, fragile areas in all of the Cape May beach seems like a dereliction of, you know, protecting what we already have there. And the issue also now with the fact that the federal government is saying that they are not going to be funding the replenishment of the beach makes that area an even more delicate and more so prone to erosion. So I am hoping that we can find another place. I think that all of us that have been learning about this over the last three weeks are really interested and excited about it. I've learned more about the Jacob Jones Memorial, about the, about all the boats that have gone down, about the building of the canal in order to have the boats, our boats go not out into the ocean and get hit by the e-boat. And I was hoping with the help of the council that there might be another location that has a view of some body of water, if it's not the ocean, the harbor, where it actually could create some kind of an educational museum-like place so that children can go even on a rainy day and learn about these things, because we all think it's really worthwhile. And we would just like to find the absolute best place that everybody could access it and enjoy it. Thanks.
Hello, Raj Johnson, 826 Lafayette Street. I'm not a resident of the area near Poverty Beach, but I have heard what these residents are saying, and it, and respectfully so. I feel as though they would feel a lot better if they knew what is the process of a project I feel as though they would feel a lot better if they knew what is the process of a project like this? In other words, when do, when does council get involved? And when are their voices through the council heard by the people who are proposing this? So, you know, could you give us an idea, like, what is, what, what comes first? What comes next? What comes next? And then when is there a yes and a no? And how is that, how, how does that come about?
Well, there's no definite process, I would say, but frankly, we've, we were approached from this group to, to do a monument and to, and to recognize the sacrifices of those 130 souls, 31, I believe. And so we said, come to a council meeting and present it. We put their information on our website because we wanted everyone to see it. And, and obviously have had multiple meetings since then. So, I mean, that's the, that's the way we've done it so far.
And then what is the next step? I mean, how long, the, the one gentleman, I thought eloquently said, you know, they have given you their muss, and it seems very strongly they say it must be in Cape May. I, anyway, when do you give your muss? When do you say?
Well, at the process, at this point, not, you know, just having sat through the presentations, that's been my involvement at this point, not, we've heard loud and clear that there have been concerns about every location, about size, dimension, impact, sustainability. So there hasn't been what they, they haven't come to us with a final presentation. One of the things that we wanted from the very beginning was it them to engage with the community, that this was to be a transparent process. I haven't seen a presentation at this point in time, a model, a design, a location that meets the standards for, that they've gone through and had these discussions. So from my perspective, when they come with something that has been accepted by the community to, to the largest extent it can be, there will always be people who will not be satisfied with a location.
And what do you define as the community? Because apparently, there is a, a group of people that have the money to do this, and they are a part of the community.
Understood.
And then there is another part of the community that maybe doesn't have as much money. And, I mean, so like, which part of the community do you listen to?
Well, it's through this representation here. People come to these meetings and voice their concern. I don't ask them how much money they have when they, when they step forward to the podium, quite frankly. It doesn't make a difference to me one way or the other. If you have a concern, you come forward, you, you raise your concern, you present an eloquent or, you know, a cogent argument for it, and we listen. When it comes to a vote, it comes to a vote because they're coming forward, and we feel confident that they have designed something that not only that the community is accepting of, but also does meet our needs. So there are locations that they may define, or they may decide upon, Roz, quite frankly, that I may not agree with. So, but I haven't heard any of that yet. We haven't gotten to that point. They are still evolving this process. They are hearing loud and clear that the design scale and scope and location to date have not been accepted. And that has been recognized. I have not seen something that I would say, that looks like it'll fit, that looks like it's an acceptable location, and that I, as a member of council, as a voting member, feel is appropriate. Everything that we've had so far is them coming, presenting options, and then telling them, please go out and make sure you're getting community feedback. Right now, what I understand is they are going back to square one. Now, whether or not square one includes a new location, I don't know that. I read the articles like you do, and I hear the presentations that, you know, or the comments that are made here. But that's all I know at this point.
It just seems to me like they should be given some type of guidance, like, you know, everybody's saying, well, we're not involved, we're not involved. Who is involved?
Well, the challenge with the guidance is, they're, they're coming up with a proposal that they think, you know, is serving the memory of these sailors. And our job is to decide whether or not that monument, that location, is conducive to the, to the city of Cape May. That's my job. For me to go out and say to that group, okay, I want you to do this X or Y or Z, I don't, as an elected official, I don't really feel that that's my role. What, if I was a private resident and raised the concerns that you do, then I would have, I would do that, but, you know.
So their new, their new proposal, what are they basing their new proposal on?
The feedback that they've heard through the three meetings is my understanding.
And that's a question for them to answer.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, again, you know, I don't know what gets said or told to, I'm not participating in the process. I'm waiting for them to come here and present to us something that they're asking us and that they've done their due diligence.
So they'll, they'll come a final point where they will say, this is what we've come up with, we're going no farther with this, is it accepted or is it not?
I don't, I have no idea whether or not that that's what they'll do. I'm not.
We can't answer for them.
Yeah. Those are the questions you should be asking them.
But when do you, I think, I, when do you make the decision?
We don't dictate what people want to say to us. We, that's not our job. I mean, they, they can be designing a McDonald's up there if they want. I mean, that's not our position.
I understand, but when, when do you say yes or no?
When they officially request us to accept or deny their proposal.
And does that come in form of what?
In a public meeting just like this, I'm sure everyone will be there, and we hope everyone's there. I mean, look, we don't want to push this on people that no one wants. I mean, believe me, we, we care about everybody's feelings here, 100%. And that's, we have said that to the group, believe me. I mean, a lot of the concerns that have been brought up are exactly our concerns. You know, we would like to give them the opportunity to come up with a lovely World War II memorial, okay? I mean, I think it's an extremely important event in the history of Cape May. But we have all said those same concerns that have been mentioned here today, we've said them to the group as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Fogle. I live at 108 Trenton Avenue. Two things come to mind for me. And of course, I forgot the first one. The, there, I'm late to the party, so to speak. I was not part of any of the earlier discussions and all that, I was not here. But I've read up a lot recently, and it, as we all know, various locations have already been turned down. And, and now we're stuck on, on Poverty Beach at the moment. A friend of mine, who is actually perhaps in this room, mentioned to me the other day an idea of possibly putting it out at Cape May Point State Park, where there is a very large history from World War II. When I was a kid, the Quonset Huts were still there. We've got the bunker out there. We have lots of parking out there. Now, granted, I'm saying we, it's not Cape May City. And I understand these gentlemen would like to keep the thing in Cape May City. I would advocate that it's not the right place, especially with so much opposition to it. And the gentlemen, consider another location. Obviously, they would have to talk to the state. So that would be my suggestion, after having reflected on, because I initially told this person, absolutely not in Cape May Point, because I'm a Cape May Point girl. I didn't want it. The second thing, though, that I wanted to mention, I think it might have been two years ago now, the arches. And that, we, we had a whole slew of them put in, and then there was a proposal, obviously, to put more in, and there was private money funding it. And at the time, I said, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. And I feel kind of the same way about this particular project. I personally have a problem with private money coming in and almost dictating to a city of Cape May, for example.
What's happening?
Well, they have, they're saying, absolutely in Cape May, cannot be anywhere else.
We haven't said yes to that, and...
Well, I know you haven't said that. I'm just stating my opinion right now.
That's fine, but I just want to be clear. No one up here is being dictated to because somebody has money. This is a...
I didn't say that, no, 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 no. You're taking my words out of context.
I'm, I've tried not to, but let me, let me say my opinion. This is for a World War II memorial. This is not for a condo that some rich people are trying to push on us. I just want to be, I mean, we're not being influenced by, like, some underground money or something. I mean, I've, I've heard a couple of times from some folks about outside money or influence. I mean, this is a World War II memorial. I mean, I'd like to see it as a plaque or something simple, okay? But...
Absolutely. Excuse me for talking over you, because I will sit down to let someone else speak. Someone mentioned, I think, in France, I've been to see the, the beaches, Juno, et cetera. There are one or two big monuments, but everything is pristine. And Lo monuments, where you can read something. In Wildwood, Turtle Gut, there's a small thing available for people to read. I don't, I don't understand the need for something this huge. I do support the idea of honoring these men and honoring our heritage. But again, it seems pretty obvious to me that that location is not going to work, and it's time then for those people who are involved to rethink the location, rethink, as they apparently are, the size. I don't really think that most people who object to that location object to honoring the people involved. I don't think that's the issue at all. I think it ultimately comes down to the location and the size. So thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
I'm Alice Morris, 1621 Beach Ave., Unit 205. I'd like to express, number one, my, I guess, my concern and frustration with not just the current status of ignorance that we all have, but with our process, and we're asking for some help with that. Mayor, you indicated that you are, at this point, and I assume you're speaking for council, as ignorant as the rest of us. Being in a state of ignorance about a matter of great importance causes great discomfort. The difference between your ignorance and mine is that you will make the deciding decisions. You may base it, as you say, on having some wishes yourself, but this is really the first time I've heard them clearly expressed for the nature of the monument. I've heard you say that you have not yet said yes, but it does appear that at other points in the process, you have said no.
That's, that's not correct.
Well, I'm basing that on what appears to have been at least a years-long journey of that committee's effort from site to site.
I'm answering what you said. That's not correct.
Okay.
We, any locations that they rejected was on them.
All right, well, then maybe it's time for us to propose that there should be either some mechanism for saying no, or some better mechanism for ensuring that the community will be involved in, in offering our opinion. We're all aware that you have many more people present and able to attend to express themselves over the summer months. Frankly, it causes, again, uncertainty and anxiety that a meeting will be held in December at a time that most of us are not aware of or not available to attend, and it will, it can be made to appear as if there's no opposition to a plan. That is a very uncomfortable position for us to be in. So we are, that is part of why you're being asked for more clarity about a process so that we can feel more confident. I'd like to just ask for your focus on this piece of what has been presented to us in reference to this proposed monument or memorial. John Boker, the architect, stated, and it's been referred to before, that the purpose of the monument was to have the observer experience the horror of war and the terror of the sailors on that sinking ship. If this is their purpose, then I would have great concern about the nature of what is as yet an unknown new proposal for a monument. I don't believe it is appropriate emotionally for a passerby on the beach to be emotionally assaulted by such an image and such feelings. And I have to believe that part of what your role is on the council is to protect the well-being of the community. So I need to ask you to pay attention to such motivations as, however well-intended they are by that committee. I would, I would view a monument where an unsuspecting beachgoer or passerby in the city could be assaulted by such emotions as contrary to the well-being of the community. We may not always be here to respond to every proposal, and you are the people who will make the decision. I would really ask you to pay attention, whatever shape or size it is, to what emotions and intent is expressed. That changes what it should look like and where it should go. And I know we're not just talking about our beach location. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Hunter Cochran, 1429 New Jersey Avenue. In light of the clarity of the opposition to this site at Poverty Beach, I am wondering if it might be possible for the council to help the residents of East Cape May to maybe form a participation in this process for the Jones Memorial. Maybe you all could facilitate our greater participation in their committee and try to eliminate this NIMBY problem, which is what we're clearly having. I mean, I have many other neighbors who have, are here today to speak on the record, because this is really our only opportunity to get on the record about how we feel about this. Now, I have previously already gone on the record. What do you think about that idea of...
Have you reached out to the committee and asked them if you...
Well, I have had one-on-one meetings with Mr. Martell directly, so...
Okay. But have you asked to be some representation on the committee?
I have not specifically asked for that yet. I'm, I'm wondering if you all think that might be a good way to help, to get past where we are at the moment.
Okay, so I have to reel this in a little bit. I appreciate people's concerns. We, and, and believe me, if this was on our desk as proposal, we would be talking about those very same concerns. I just want to be clear with everybody. We, we agree. I'm, I'm, I hope, I'm saying we, but I think there would be many people at this table that would have very similar concerns. But we're not that committee. We aren't, and we, we don't control them.
But I understand that.
Also, I just want to address this, because it was also just said. Any idea that we're going to have some secret meeting in December when people aren't here is 100% false. That's, you know, this is why we're having these meetings right now, asking them to be held on online platforms so that the most people can participate. Believe me, we're, we want this to be as transparent as possible. So I just want to make sure that's really clear.
Well, point of clarification, in the online meetings, you can't participate as a...
They're not our meetings, but we ask them...
No, 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 no. I'm talking about city, the, this meeting we're in right now, city council. If I was somewhere else and logged into Zoom, I can't participate in the meeting, can I?
No.
Exactly. That was the point she was trying to make, is that, wait, wait a minute. No one's saying it's trying to be done that way. However, if I was trying to get something done, I would be presenting it... was trying to get something done, I would be presenting it in the off-season, not in the summer season, if I didn't want participation. That's the only point she was trying to make.
But I think we're right here in the middle of the season, so that's, that's the point I'm making.
I think, sir, the, the inference, though, is that we would, we would try and slip something through. And I can assure you, there is no intention of doing that. And we are listening to you. But if you wanted to be a participant in, in trying to influence their decision, their design, their location, my, I would be saying, I'd like to sit in on these discussions early on. And you should feel free to do that. You know, having a discussion with them and saying, please encourage participation, they may feel like they've done that. I don't know. All I'm saying is if you really feel strongly, and it was me, I would be forcing my way into those discussions if you feel that your representation for your area is, would be best served. And perhaps they'll be open to that, especially if they want this to be successful, which I'm sure that they want it to be successful. So, you know, you would think that they would be welcoming participation from the people who live in the area to make sure that they get a design and a location that is conducive and accepting.
I understand. We, your point is to approach them directly. And, and you're outside of the process. But Mayor, no different than a first reading, I wanted to have some input about this ordinance. When do I get an opportunity to have input about an ordinance?
Say it.
Other than second reading?
Please say it now.
Do you, do you really want me to bring up that subject now when we're still talking about...
Whenever you'd like to. You can talk to me after.
No, my point, the point is, I, the point I'm trying to make to you is, there isn't an opportunity, as somebody from the public, to be involved in the process. An example I was trying to use for you is a new ordinance. I can't give you my opinion on...
Give it to us right now.
Would you let me finish my point, please? My point is, the process is such, you do it at the second reading, not at the first reading. The, the opportune time to have input is before it becomes an ordinance in a first reading, second reading. That's all. It's just the point I'm making.
The mayor's, mayor's saying right now is, this point in our agenda is when we address anything that's not, or that you want to speak about. Previous, there's two, two public portions of the meeting. One is on agenda items, and now, okay, now you can speak about anything.
You, I, I, I think the point is that he would have liked to have influence over the design and the, the actual ordinance and the language of the ordinance.
Prior to it being entered as a first reading. That's correct. That is correct.
Okay. Let's go to the process of an agenda. We published this agenda on Friday in its entirety. We, not, not, I don't think there's another municipality in the county that publishes every single ordinance bill, all of it listed online by Friday. We, we published the entire thing on Friday before Tuesday meeting, because we want you to see, take a look. This ordinance that you're referring to about the pools, this is first reading. So we have multiple public comments throughout the meeting. You have it on the resolutions or at the end of the meeting. Then we have it on the second reading, which is weeks later, after it's been published and advertised multiple times now, to, for public comment. If you have something that you'd like to see changed in between, too, you don't have to wait. You can call the mayor or any of the council members. I mean, so, and, and frankly, right now, and I'm, I'm saying that as an invitation to you, if you have an issue with it, please let us know. I'm...
Frankly, the, the Jones Memorial project is way more important than the pools. So I'm not going to talk about the pool issue today. I just was talking about the method and what one of my prior speakers was concerned about, is getting involved in the process as opposed to, oh, no, it's about to happen. Now what do we do?
So there are many ways in which ordinances are, you know, evolve. This one in particular came out of the planning board. Yeah, but, but, but...
Let's not, let, please, let's not talk about the pool ordinance. I, I will address that separately, either at the second reading or at the next meeting, please. What's important today is the Jones Memorial, for me. And I have many other local residents who have come today to, to the meeting, and I've asked them to come to go on the record about their opposition to it. It seems clear that it's crystal clear how much opposition there is. I know for a fact that they changed the plans and are back to square one because of all the opposition that has been presented to date. So that's progress in the process. That's all. And I, I'm, I'm happy. I just wanted to see if you thought there was a method involving the council to have better participation in this particular project. You, you gave me the answer and it's, and I, and I understand the answer, and that's how we'll address it. We'll go directly to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm losing my, losing my paperwork. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joseph Carroll, and I live at 1720 Maryland Avenue. I've lived there for 45 years. When I was purchasing the house, I was told nothing could be built on Poverty Beach because it was too environmentally sensitive. There's 14 houses there today. I can't understand, there's an email that I was sent to come here and protest the monument because it was wildlife habitat, natural dune destabilization, and environmentally integrity. All those ingredients are on Poverty Beach. Behind my home, the Sewell Track was such an environmental football. For 40 years, we fought that. We finally accomplished, the state came up with $19 million and bought that track. My opinion is, the whole area, my house included, never should have been built on Poverty Beach. It's too environmentally insensitive. I don't understand, the Trucks family wants to build now three more houses up on the beach. I didn't hear any of that today. Is that the reason why they don't want the monument? There's 400 signatures on that petition you just received. Everyone's saying, don't build it, don't build it, don't build it. I think council and the mayor have to make a decision. Do they want to take a chance again? We don't have a seawall in the 17 or 1800 block to protect us. In a storm, we get clobbered. I was there for a hurricane, two hurricanes. I wouldn't want to be there for the third one. And now these hurricanes are coming. Can you pass that around? That's a photograph I took after Hurricane Gloria. You couldn't get down the street. The street was like a river. Behind the house was like a river. And what did they do? They built more houses. So I think, Mr. Mayor, you got to draw a line in the sand and say, we're not going to do any more of this. Because that's where the storm's going to come. The Corps of Army Engineers wants to build a 17-foot seawall along Wilmington Avenue. You won't be able to see this monument if you build that seawall. There's no talk of building a seawall from Wilmington to the jetty at the Coast Guard Base. That's what we need. Now there's talk in Washington, they're not going to refund the, the monies that they're using to re-nourish the beaches. When I first moved into my house, you couldn't walk from Wilmington Avenue to Philadelphia Avenue. There was no beach. And I have a beautiful beach. But if we don't get that renourishment every year, we won't have a beach again. As fast as they pump that sand, sometimes it's washed away in a couple storms. So most of my neighbors, they don't want it. They all have signs all over the neighborhood, don't build anything on Poverty Beach. I think we've seen enough damage to this city, we don't need to see any more of it. The flood insurance is to the point, you won't be able to get flood insurance in this city if, if you continue to do what they're doing. My comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Hyde, 1007 New Jersey Avenue. The comments I wanted to make today was from the perspective of new regulation. And I know, Mayor, that you've, you've been following along with members of your administration, the real rules and what impact that would have on Cape May. So when I first learned of the monument being proposed for Poverty Beach, I thought, well, that's kind of crazy if we really think that sea level rise is going to impact us. And the current regulation at that time, when I first heard about it, was five feet. And then subsequently, the, the rules were changed from five feet to four feet. But still, if that's the case, if we're going to see continuous sea level rise, and if there is a continuous impact in less funding coming from Washington to support our, our beach replenishment efforts, just putting anything on the beach, I think, is, is unwise. That entire area is going to be underwater, if it's true, by 2100, when certainly I will be long gone. And I just think we shouldn't waste a lot of time on a proposal that's not going to make for a successful monument. The intent is beautiful. I'm a, my father was a commander in the Navy, so, you know, you have that kind of attachment. So, so anyway, that's all I wanted to share today. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. To sum this up, I, we hear you 100%. I, I don't think anybody on council is going to turn to me after the, everyone leaves and says, we're definitely going to build that. I, I don't, I don't see that happening. And let me just say this, while we have this group of passionate people about Cape May. You know, sir, you mentioned the Sewell Track. I mean, we have this proposal from the group, that's before us, you're here. But I want to talk about what this city council has been working on. You, you said it was a 40-year litigation, as many of you probably know, on the Sewell Track. And, and I know a lot of you were involved in working on that for decades in part of that. The solicitor, myself, and several council members, we met with the governor. I mean, we worked really hard to make sure that that, on multiple occasions, you know, and he wrote, he signed off on that $19 million check from the DEP. And now that's preserved. And I say that because that's the type of things that this council has been working on. The seawall, $25 million from FEMA, that is going to protect that neighborhood. And sir, you said 17 feet, which is true at a certain point, but that's not 17 feet off the ground. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. That's 17 feet above sea level. And, and we, we've shown renderings, and you can see that on the website today, if you're interested. Frankly, I think it looks very nice. And, and worked with the Army Corps, taking them from what was a wall, and, and their original renderings of the Army Corps. And I just want you to know this, because this is what this council's been working on. The original renderings of that corner was a basically concrete wall. And it went up approximately, I, I, don't quote me on this, but I think eight to nine feet off of the street. That was the wall, the seawall that they had designed. We took that and said, look, and, and, but I don't want to give us too much credit. There, there was a lot of work with the Historic Preservation Office, the State Historic Preservation Office, and many other volunteers. But what we did was, we basically pushed everything further back. We created that promenade and created basically a seating wall that was added essentially three feet to the height, but it was about 30 feet back off of the street. It, that, that 30 feet varies throughout the, the actual promenade area. But I think if you saw the difference between those two things, you would be very impressed about what the work that was done. And I'm only saying all this because you're here and this is things that I know you're very concerned about. But just please know that those are the things that we've been working on as a council. This other stuff has been, been presented to us. But that's a $25 million funding from FEMA, hoping that FEMA exists within the next two years before, so they can cut that check. But as soon as they do, those are the important projects that we're working on. $19 million, of course, of course, for the Sewell Track. Those were really important projects for this part of town that, that we, we have been working on. I just say that to you, and, and please know that this will not be a decision made when no one's here. We, we will not accept that. We hear you very loud and clear. And, and I encourage you, please, to reach out to the committee. Reach out to them. I, I, my understanding of them and the defense of them a little bit is, they, they said they're rewriting the whole thing. So it sounds like they're listening. And, and I hope that you continue to voice your opinions and help them get to a better product, because I think, I think that they can come to a good product and, and something simple. And I understand, again, all the comments. That's all I have to say. Is there any other public comments before we close, from the public?
Just one quick note. We did remove the, the project location presentations from the website. So they, all that information is off the website.
Anyone else this afternoon? Okay, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Hopefully, if you have any youngsters, you can come out tonight at what time?
5:30.
5:30 in front of Convention Hall. Thank you all. Everyone, have a wonderful evening.